Meeting with invocation, Kirk.
Dear Lord, we just thank you for this day and we thank you for the time that we get to come together, Lord, and we just ask your blessing on this board as we listen to our citizens of the city, Lord, and we just ask your guidance, Lord, and it is your name we pray. Amen.
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 All right, we stand for a pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On our Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
All right, we move to our consent item. Has everybody had a chance to look over the meetings from May 21st? If so, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept.
Motion on the table, do I have a second?
I second the motion.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. All right, we go to our first case, case file number 2025-04-V. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Christopher Tetley, owner of variance from section 14-7-7 of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a structured carport to be built at a zero-feet side yard setback instead of the required 15-feet side yard setback in a single-family 3 SF3 zoning district lot 56 block 7, North Park Edition, ninth filing, 16 East 95th Street.
Good morning, how are you guys? I wanted to first off say thank you for our two new members that came on board. We do appreciate your time that you are dedicating to this board and we're very excited to have you here today. And for our members that are here, what I'm gonna be doing, I'm gonna be presenting the case first and then we're gonna open it up to our public and if you guys then wanna come and talk on behalf of your case, you will be allowed to come at that time, okay? So, for this case, we have a request for 376 square feet, which will be 14 by 24 carport that they're requesting for a variance. And this is against our code, which is section 14-7-7. And because it's encroaching onto our setback, we are recommending denial in regards to that. So, the first reducing of the side yard setback is to, sorry. You can see here that it goes down to zero feet. And then, when it's supposed to be, the side yard setback should be five feet. And... They do have an AC unit and I'll let the applicant talk in regards to that because it does reduce it at one point from going, from the 15 feet that they have between the wall of the house to the fence, it goes from 11 feet. So, they still have the obstacle in there. This is a neighborhood that does have an alley. I guess, we do have alleys. So, there would be an opportunity to maybe take it through the alley and go there and try to putting the carport through the back. But I think it's that they just, it's easier, more convenient for them to go through the front. They will be adding a slab right next to the, where they originally have the slab so it would be an easier transition for them to go into that area. They have talked to engineering and they have requested for a curb cut for them to be able to have an easier access onto, from the street into that area as well. However, like I had mentioned, because it goes against our code, we are recommending denial. However, if you choose to move forward with this carport, we do recommend that you approve with condition one through four. Now open for any questions.
Do we have any questions for city staff?
Did the structure actually change? Because the last time we saw this case, it was a carport. This is looking in this elevation, I guess this belongs to it. Looking more like a garage now, enclosed, not a carport, or what's going on there?
That's what the customer dropped off this morning.
Oh, I had not seen that one, sorry. I will have to defer to the applicant when they come up.
Do we know how many, it looks like there's a gap there and that's probably to avoid conflict with the AC unit. Do we know how far it is from the house to this new structure?
So, from the AC, I don't know if this drawing helps you.
Well, so in the drawing, it looks like it's more like a carport, like what Tito was saying, but this seems more like a, an enclosed.
Yes, and like I said, I had not seen, this came this morning, according to Shayna, and I had not seen that drawing.
Yeah, it looks like they have solid walls.
I was under the impression it's a carport, not enclosed.
Any more questions for staff?
What is the build in this area? How much property can you cover? What percentage? And are we over that, adding this garage?
No, he's, he's within his ability to be able to add more to. We're not, we have not exceeded the lot coverage.
All right, anybody else? Thank you, Elizabeth.
Yeah.
At this moment, we're gonna open this section of the meeting to the public. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this variance, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes or less.
Chris Tetley, 16 East 95th Street. It's not enclosed, it's just brick pillars. And it's designed, I can't talk in public, sorry. It's designed to match the rest of the house.
Oh.
Okay.
But it's not, not enclosed.
So, there's no door on it?
No.
On this, will you be entering through the front of the property or are you gonna put a gate on the back?
Through the front.
And what's the width between the two houses driving back there?
I have 15 feet, so does the neighbor.
So, there's 30 feet between the two houses?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it was brought to attention at the last case, when we heard it the last time, is would you consider moving your AC unit to where you probably wouldn't even need the variance because you would have the distance, the five-foot setback, if you got rid of the AC unit and you'd still have your, the width that you're needing for the carport? Has that been, I think that's the reason we tabled it the last time.
No, it was tabled for the curb cut.
Right, but we also tabled it for, to see if there is consideration to move that AC unit, condenser unit to another, either further back or to the other side of the house.
Yeah, I don't think that was addressed, but I mean, it's a possibility.
Okay. Because I think that, that would give you your distance, your five-foot setback would still be there and you'd still be able to get the carport right up next to the house. But, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, I'm opening options, you know, I'm just trying to protect my vehicle.
Also, have you considered putting a gate in the alleyway? So, you don't have to do a curb cut?
I wanna put a shop back there in the future and then I have that concrete slab that I can't drive down the side of the house, the patio slab.
Okay.
Anybody else?
So, the, so the curb cut was allowed, is that being allowed as well? Yes, sir. He said it would be fine. Okay. And then, so from the street all the way up to... I don't know how to address this, is it a carport or garage? It's a car, it's not closed. It's just designed to look nice. So, the concrete will go up to, and then into the carport? Yes, sir. From the, from the house, it would go back 27. It's a big truck, so.
Can you put that, the drawing, the...
I can address the curb cut. Yeah, we will discuss it. He's allowed to have a residential standard as 30-foot road with a three, four-foot transition. It would have to start a foot off his property line and then a four-foot transition. So, his actual way down for the curb could be five feet from the property line.
Anybody else?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. And I already closed this section of the meeting. Board, commissioners, discussion?
The thing we go back to the, move the AC unit, you got plenty of room for your carport on the side. You can do your curb cut, your driveway, and you still meet the setback without the variance. You could even actually attach that, it's not allowed to be a carport, you could attach and extend the house over that way if you wanted to because you would still be within the setbacks on the structure.
So, do I have a motion to, more discussion? You have suggestions?
And I'll make a motion that we deny this case due to the fact that there's plenty of room if you just do a different option, different design, move a couple of things around, it'd get what you want.
Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
I second.
There's a motion on the table and there's a second. Before we vote on it, should we table it once more just for options? Because if we deny it?
That'll work out, I'll retract my motion to deny and I'll, I'll motion to table it because there, for, for further review and further design because there are options for him that he can get what he wants if he just does a couple of different things.
Okay, and the reason, the reason there's a table is that if we deny, then he's locked for a year. He can't do anything else for a year.
Okay.
So, there's a motion to table. Do you have a second?
Second.
There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. All right, case file number 2025-06-V. Open the public hearing to consider the, the approval of requests of Gilbert V Vasquez, owner of variance from section 14-7-7 of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a carport to be built with a five-feet yard setback instead of the required 10-feet side yard setback of a two, two-family, one, 2F-1 zoning district lot 6 through 8, block 93, College Edition, 1521 Goldr Avenue.
Before we start this case, I wanted to announce that Mr., sorry.
Henry.
Henry Enriquez is going to not be participating on voting for this case. Also, I wanted to let you guys know that Mr. Vasquez was not able to make it to this, to this meeting. However, he does have sent a representative in his name and he let us know ahead of time.
So, for the record, Henry, do you abstain from?
I'm gonna excuse myself from this case.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. So, the applicant, Mr. Vasquez, owner of this property, is requesting to obtain a variance to allow the construction of a 450-square foot, which would be an 18 by 25 carport, to be built within a five-foot side setback instead of the required 10-foot yard setback. The applicant is requesting the variance from section 14-7-7 of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance. Again, because this goes against our zoning ordinance, staff is recommending denial. This is, since this is a corner lot, it makes it a little bit more challenging for us and where in a different area, it would have a different setback, right? Usually, we would tend to see a side yard setback that is five, but because it's a corner lot, because of the, because it's an SF, what was it? SF1, it goes into the category in where it's supposed to be a 10-foot side setback instead of the, usually of the five-foot setback. And because of that, he's not meeting the criteria of conforming within our required setbacks. So, he did provide some exhibits of how it would be looking. And if, we are recommending denial, however, if you do decide to move forward, staff is recommending that you approve it with the conditions one through four.
All right, do we have any questions for staff?
I just wanna clarify something. In the, in the packet, it says staff analysis of this request is to approve applicant's request. I hear you're saying denial.
We recommend denial.
Just one other question.
Yes. We can't go again, we can't go towards.
It's always gonna be a denial.
It's always gonna be a denial from us.
A quick question, is this property located in the overlay zone?
It's not located. It's adjacent to it, it's literally the line, the, the street is what separates it and that's why it's, he thought that it was and he couldn't. I said, the only way that you can is coming through the ZBAP.
So, this is on the side street, not on Goldr, correct?
Correct.
All right, any other questions for? No?
No.
All right, if anybody wants to speak for or against this variance, please step forward. No?
They came on his behalf.
Oh, they came on his behalf, okay. We close this motion of the meeting. Commissioners, discussion?
One question I have, it almost looks like in the picture, the concrete only goes a third of the way?
Go back to...
Okay, so it will have concrete completely underneath it?
Yes.
Okay.
It's a driveway that it has.
So, oh, I see. So, this is a drawing here, I'm getting it now.
Yes.
A little slow, but I see. There's nothing there now?
No. He's trying to, from what we heard, he's trying to make it match the house and...
So, he's just trying to put a carport by his garage? And it's on a side street?
Okay. All right.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
There's a motion on the table, do I have a second? There's a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any objection? Motion carries. Case file number 2025-07-V. Open a public hearing to consider approval of the request of the Kent Companies owner, print signs contractor for a variance from section 14-10-1D3 of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow approximately 433 square feet of freestanding identification signs instead of the 400 square feet allowed per case in a R retail zoning district lot 2, block 1, Yukon Ridge Commercial, first filing, 3700 East Yukon Road.
So, this property is located at 3700 East Yukon Road and it's currently a gas station. We did see this case, I wanna say, close to a year ago. I don't know if some of you guys might remember this. They came wanting three different signs. However, you guys approved two of the signs for them. So, now they're coming back with that third one in order to try to get it approved. So, they're asking for additional 32.33 square feet freestanding sign for their car wash. So, I'm gonna, sorry, I think I'm gonna go to this one. This one identified, so the one that's in the green is showing you guys what was approved, 6724. And the one that is the red would be the new proposal that they're asking. They did make some modifications on the new sign. It was a lot higher, so they did come down on the height for it. However, it is exceeding the allowable, I guess, signage for the area. One of the biggest challenges that they have is that it, it's, it's all one parcel. Even though they might have multiple businesses in here, because it's all one parcel, they're only allowed to have a certain amount based on the parcel size. And again, because it's going against our code, we're recommending denial. However, if you do decide to move forward, we recommend that we move to a master sign plan approval process. This would mean that they can have as many signs as they want, as much as they want to do, but instead of coming to your board, it would go straight to city council. And all they would have to do is create, they already have the design and everything. We just bring it up to city council exactly how they have it and it's up to council to allow the master sign plan and it should be a lot, I don't see an issue with it. It's just, we're exceeding the code, but you're allowed through a master sign plan in order to be able to exceed that and we're still, you know, being within our code. Now open to any questions that you guys may have.
Any questions?
Is there a picture of the sign? I'm sorry, I think you had it there. So, it's a big sign?
Yes.
Like the other?
Exactly. Like I said, it's, it'll be the same size as what's already there. They did reduce the sign from the previous one, but they already have the advertisement for their car wash on the other two.
So, they already have signage for car wash on two signs and they wanting a third one?
Correct.
So, they could also drop it 30 square feet and it could be approved without us?
Yes, if they, yes.
Just as a refresher, the signage square footage is based off of?
The linear.
The linear lot frontage.
The linear or the 500, the max is 500 square feet.
Because I think we had that discussion before because they have frontage on?
I know.
Two roads and it's...
What hurts, it's that it's all one property. If it was parceled out, like if the car wash would have been parceled out, they would have no issue. But because it's all one lot, that's the dilemma. They still can get...
The linear frontage is not, is not governing totally, it's the 500 max feet that governs what's allowable on one parcel.
They cannot exceed that and we're already at 513. So, that's why, they can still accomplish what they want, but they would have to go through a master sign process.
Any other questions? All right, we're open this portion of the meeting to the public. Anybody wants to speak for or against, please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record, three minutes or less.
Yeah, good morning, Kevin, sorry. Kevin Fryer, 5500 Newcastle, Midland, Texas. Here on behalf of the Kent Companies, I work in our planning and development office and I was here just about a year ago in front of this body. The last time we were here, just to clear up a few of the things I heard there, we had a mistake on our original application. This sign was calculated at like 200 square feet or something. So, when the city recommended denial last time for, and I believe the term you used was egregious, you know, overreach of the sign. I agree, it was, but that, it was not right. We've gone back, we've corrected it. Unfortunately, we couldn't correct it in real time that time, so we had to go back, go through the process again. To answer the question about the existing signs, those existing signs are 30 feet tall. So, this is not as big as the existing signs. This is, you know, I think it's overall height of 15 feet 3 inches. Much smaller square footage from a face standpoint and it's about 130 feet from that sign on Grandview you see there. And you see the way the driveway, you know, bisects the, the frontage there. So, it really is kind of like its own lot, even though, as previously stated, it is one parcel. Again, that's part of the reason we're here today asking for this variance is, you know, it's a unique, or uniquely large site, it's almost six acres. To put it in perspective, the national average for a retail property is about .8 acres. So, if that was the case, you know, there could be up to 11 businesses on the same size parcel, all with their own, you know, allowable signage. So, to address the city's concern of proliferation of signage, we, we've got two businesses operating on where 11 businesses could be. So, I think if you look at that expanse there and look at the, the two existing signs and the proposed sign, there's a lot of room there. I know it doesn't necessarily factor in, but this is the variance board, so it does a little bit. We've got, with the C store and the car wash, just under 1,100 square feet of frontage on Yukon and Grandview. We actually control two additional lots there for a total of almost 1,400 feet of road frontage. Therefore, I would argue that this is not an overreach and frankly is necessary. I'm open to any questions you have. Obviously, the Kent Companies has been a community partner for a long time in this area. You know, this is not a perfect picture, but you can see, you know, we do a lot of beautification. There's a lot of landscaping there to break up our, you know, general brown and dusty landscape. So, appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today and would like to answer any questions you might have.
So, is the car wash entrance gonna be the same entrance as it is to pull in to what would be, I guess, the south side?
Yeah, you would, you would enter, if you wanted to go to the car wash directly, you'd enter off of Grandview, right there at the bottom right of your screen.
Where the other sign is?
Yeah, yes, sir, the, the sign advertising, mainly advertising the Chevron station, you know, would be on the north side of that driveway. The car wash standalone would be on the south side.
Any other questions?
And just to address, I know that it was mentioned that, you know, possibly there could be a master sign and whatever, that was kind of a new development just this morning as I walked in. I don't know enough to know what all the ramifications are of doing that. Not only in extension of time period to get the additional signage, but also for the future, I don't know what that would mean for the property to have a master signage. Is that limited in any way, you know, for potential future development or, you know, another owner at some point in time? So, I would actually, you know, prefer not to go that route.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, discussion? Elizabeth, how far is that proposed signage from residential?
I did not measure that.
It's a long way.
Right now, it's a long way.
Right now, it's a long way. Well, I think, and he could probably answer this, but I would, I think the property even to the, would be the south is also commercial.
Commercial, like?
Retail.
Retail.
So, there's no houses.
The housing's gonna be more in, towards the center, towards the back of the shopping.
Okay.
My take on this is that this is basically based on a technicality because it was bought as an entire lot where it is originally could be divided into parcels. But the square footage allows us the signage. You know, it's just a technical deal and it's been held up to a certain point.
The square footage doesn't, the linear doesn't. That's why, there's a max, there's a caps to it.
So, I, I just, if there's any way to just go ahead and continue on, you know, I don't have a problem with it. I don't see, you know, this is, you know, why, why would we have to go to a master plan? Shouldn't that have been proposed and bypassed us?
It did, it was proposed.
So, I have a question. So, if they were to replot this, then this would not... replot this, then this would not be an issue?
Correct.
If they were to just replot the?
They can replot, they can do a master plan.
So?
But I think replating it, you're putting a burden on them that really didn't have to happen. And I argued this before in the last time. They have so much linear frontage that they're having to deal with that, you know, there should be an allowance for additional signage.
And that's why we have a, a master sign plan.
Yeah.
That's why we, exactly for that, we have a master sign plan. That's the lounge. That's the way of how you can get more signage in here for it.
But I think even from the previous time, they revisited that sign, cause that sign was way bigger the first time we saw it. They reduced it. They, they've done the effort, put forth the effort to, to accommodate the city. Uh, so, I mean, my take is, is like, yeah, it's a technicality right now. Instead of having overdue burden placed on them to have to go to a master plan and go to council or do other things, we have the ability right here to allow them to do their sign and, and, and move forward with it. It's not negatively affecting the area. And they've actually done a lot of nice work there with all the landscape on that corner and adjust the corner on, on two major fronts. You know, Grandview's a major front and Yukon is definitely a major front right there. Uh, and, and so, so they've been doing their, their part to, to accommodate the city in my opinion.
If this was a McDonald's, there wouldn't be an issue with the signage, right?
It always will be an issue. It, it's not the business. It's?
No, no, no. If this was separate, a separate property from the other property.
Oh, right. If it's, if it's?
If this was a, not a car wash and Mickey D's, it would be no problem.
If there would be a different parcel.
Separate lot. If it was a separate parcel, definitely.
Yeah.
And I don't think we should say, yes, make it a separate parcel. Yes, send it to city council. They came back with a smaller sign.
Was the sign actually reduced?
Yes, it was.
Yes, it was.
Uh, in the application, it was, I think it was like two hundred or so square?
No, they reduced it.
It was, okay.
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. Commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to go ahead and get it approved due to the height adjustment and the size of the sign that it was done. I believe everything that we thought just addressed.
I'll second it.
There's a motion on the table and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The objection? Motion carries. Next case, case file number twenty twenty-five dash zero eight dash V. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Kenya Favela owner contractor of variance from section fourteen dash seven dash eight four of the city of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow structure mobile home to be placed with an eight foot feet side yard setback instead of the ten side yard setback in a G R general residence zoning lot twelve, block fourteen, Patterson addition, two oh one Fitch Avenue.
Thank you again. So this, uh, property is located at two oh one Fitch Avenue. And the applicant, uh, applied for, um, a permit to be able to place their, um, mobile home. And they ended up placing their home and then they didn't call for inspections right away. They took a little while. And then when we went to go check the, uh, placement of it, they were off by a little. They were off by almost three feet instead of them being, uh, ten feet. They're at seven point ten inches. Um, and because they're not conforming to the, that, you know, um, they, uh, have to come here to Z B A in order to be able to get a, um, approval to be able to continue to be in there. They have been there. He's been fixing his property. But again, because it goes against my code, I have to recommend denial. Um, however, um, if you do choose to, um, move forward with this and let them continue on being on this where they're at, because it would create, in this case, it would create a hardship for him in order to be able to just get that two point, what is it, two feet, two inches, um, moved. Um, we do recommend that you, if you do approve it, that you approve it, uh, with condition one and two.
One of the problems I have with it, if we ask, if they finance the mobile home FHA and we ask them to move it, they will lose their FHA financing because a mobile home, once it is placed, if it is moved, it can never go FHA again.
Any questions for us cities?
What's the normal, this on the corner lot, is it, it's just a ten foot?
It's just a ten. No, this one's a ten.
And the front is, the front is the twenty?
Uh, this one in the front was?
Back up to that picture one more time, please.
Can't remember what the front was, but we did check the front. They were clear. Do you remember Gary, what the front was? But we checked them all and he was fine. The only one that he was off was that corner.
So he indeed did not intentionally do this. Whoever placed the mobile home, placed the mobile home in the correct location.
Correct.
Okay.
It would have been caught if they would have called for inspections right away.
Right away, yes. But they took a little while to call us and by the time we got there, they had already left and?
Any other questions? Thank you, Elizabeth. At this moment, we're open this section. At this moment, we're open this section of the meeting to the public. Anybody who wants to speak for or against this variance, uh, please step forward.
They're here, but I'm thinking.
Can you just please step forward? Please state, state your name and address for the record, three minutes or less.
There we go. My name is Pedro Bonilla and I'm the husband of Kenya Favela. Uh, yeah, we had a pretty small, big hiccup with this. Um, currently we live in five oh three Drury Lane, um, in a mobile home also. Uh, it's a single wide and of course, you know, who doesn't wanna have their family in a place that's bigger? And this is like a brand new house, you know, it's a great neighborhood, it's in a corner lot. And, uh, whenever we got this permit in twenty nineteen that I asked for it, the law stated that it was a six foot setback instead of ten foot that it now is. Anyway, you know, sometimes we all have some issues, uh, family problems, work related, and I couldn't continue. So like she said, Elizabeth said, you know, um, I stopped for a while. Money wise, I, I couldn't keep going, you know, I, I had family first I had to take care of. When I come back, now the law says it's ten foot. So instead of the six foot, whenever they set the mobile home, I told them to go back two more feet. So it's almost setting at eight foot, you know, just to be on the safe side. I said, in case something changes, well, it did change, but it changed to ten, not to eight. And that's the only little hiccup we have and if, you know, if it doesn't go through, uh, we have to split that thing, we have to open it. Um, I kinda exaggerated on setting this home. We dug up two foot on the ground, dug up two foot by two feet by two feet. And we poured concrete on it and then set the blocks on it. So even to put it more sturdier, so now that's all gonna be, well, trash, you know, and everything's money, you know, I mean, um, city at the time, I don't know for what odd reason, they told me we had to pour the sidewalks before the mobile home could come in. And I told them, I'm a truck driver, you know, it's gonna break the concrete. Well, you have to. Well, right when it went in, it broke it. So there goes ten thousand dollars to the trash. So then here, just, um, a few months ago, here's a permit to pour concrete again. We poured it again and now if we have to move it, well, there's another ten thousand to the trash. So I just, you know, any way I could keep on going and going, I just hopefully y'all, y'all consider our situation and I just, if you see, it's a nice mobile home, you know, I, I, I go and water it with the jug. I put live oaks on there and I, I wanna make it look nice, you know, for my kids to, to grow there, you know, make it look nice. So that's, that's about all I could say, hopefully you consider our, our situation.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wants to speak for or against the variance? Okay, we close this, uh, section of the meeting to the public, commissioners?
Can we ask Elizabeth other questions?
Elizabeth?
Is that correct? At the time that he originally applied, it was six feet?
No, it's always been ten.
It's always been ten? Is it also correct that you make them lay the sidewalks prior to placing the home?
Not me, so? I don't know, Joe, can you answer that? Don't play me.
Yeah, I can't speak to this particular case, but typically sidewalks would be the last thing you do, so?
That would have, you would have to have sidewalks and driveway to get your final permit?
Yes.
Okay.
To get the C O, he would have to have sidewalks in.
Because if someone's saying that needs to be laid before the mobile home's placed, that should be changed.
No, that's, uh, that's not the case. It's not a requirement.
Okay.
That's the last thing that's done.
That's what I would think. Thank you.
So going back, are you, any other questions for?
So I was looking at this picture here and I see the house that's next door. And I guess looking at this picture, keep going there if you can, one more, keep going. Can you go one more? One more. Okay, two more. You have this one? I guess what I'm, I'm looking at is if you look down this, and maybe it's the angle, it looks like the next door house sticks out two or three foot feet.
Oh, there's, he, he's brought that up, but a lot of in that area.
Neighbor, but is it the same setbacks on the other?
They're all the same setbacks, but we have to go with what's in front of us, right? What other people do and if they didn't legally and what the time that they did it, it's, we have to look at what's in front of us, unfortunately.
So it's basically two feet off. Is it a safety issue with where it's at? You can't see around the corner?
That's a, a, a Joe question. Sorry, Joe. I don't?
And it is setback from the one next to it.
Yeah.
More than where you, your visibility wouldn't be obstructed, I wouldn't think.
I think the visibility, I mean, it is a little tight to see around the house, but moving it two feet, I don't know, that's drastic.
Considering it's on Pearl, you know, that's very limited traffic as it is, just that road itself. I don't see that being a imposition to, you know, the public as well.
I'm thinking if we were to deny it, it would create a, a bigger hardship than?
I agree.
Keeping it at a two feet.
I agree.
So do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do you want, okay, so, listen you, do you wanna make a motion with the, uh, recommendations from the city? The two recommendations from the city?
I'll make a motion with the two recommendations from the city to move forward.
To approve the variance?
Yes, to approve the variance.
So there's a motion to approve the variance with the two recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
No objection? Motion carries. Case file number twenty? Can we continue? All right. Case file number twenty twenty-five dash nine dash E. Open a public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Robin L. Miller, owner of a special exception for city Odessa ordinance section fourteen dash fifteen dash one D two C to permit a mobile or HUD manufacturer home on a lot with an existing single family resident in an S F three, single family, three zone district being lot thirty-one, block two, Hillside Edition, thirty eight oh one Bowie Avenue.
Uh, thank you again. I do wanna make a clarification that on the report, uh, we did put the wrong address. We accidentally put two oh one Fitch Avenue. Uh, I just wanted to make sure that you guys knew that that's not the address for it.
So what's the address?
What's the address?
Three eight oh one Bowie.
Thirty eight oh one Bowie.
Yeah, thirty eight oh one Bowie Avenue. It's correct.
It's, they're correct. In the memo, okay.
So what you stated is correct.
What I stated is correct.
What you said it is correct, but on the report it's not, that's why.
All right.
So? It makes a difference. Uh, the site is currently zone S F three, single family district. And as you guys may have remember with our, uh, when we were talking about the mobile and manufacturer homes, um, modular homes are allowed in an S F three, not, um, mobile homes. Uh, so because of that, so the difference is, um, a modular home is a prefab that is built and certified and it's built like a, still like a regular home in a factory and it's come in pieces or it sometimes can already come like prefabbed and it's just placed. Um, it usually has a foundation and everything. Uh, the HUD or ma- mobile homes usually have your red tag that's gonna say that it's a, um, a HUD home and it's certified by HUD. Um, and they're, they're great homes too, but they're, they're not allowed in an S F three zoning. So one of the biggest issues that we have with this one is that this, uh, law is supposed to be for an S F three, single family home. We're introducing, uh, another hu- house typology, which is the mobile home. So we're putting two different types of houses here, um, and one is not allowed. Um, so this would be a manufacturer home, which would be fifteen feet, two inches by twenty-eight feet. Um, and in, it's, um, going against our code, which is fourteen dash fifteen one D two C of our city, uh, zoning ordinance. Um, so they are trying to put the, the property towards the back of the, uh, property. Uh, she already has, um, two additional buildings there. She is, uh, stating that one of the buildings she would be removing regardless she's, um, if you look at the lot, let's take away the whole aspect that it's two houses, right, that we're putting in there. When it comes to the lot coverage, she would be okay in that aspect. But it's again, it's the whole aspect of the two, the two homes being in there. So when we're looking at lot area for a single family dwelling unit, the requirement is that you have to have five thousand square feet. Then it, for a mobile home means that you would have to have four thousand eight hundred square feet. So if we're having both, we would be at nine thousand eight hundred, uh, square feet, which, um, her lot is only seven thousand three hundred and seventy square feet. So she's short by two thousand four hundred and thirty square feet. So that's one. Uh, the other one is that because she's adding an accessory dwelling, uh, she would be required to have two additional parking. That, and that cannot be off street parking. It has to be on your lot. So, uh, that is not being provided. And again, um, it is not allowed in, um, this zoning S F three. In addition to that, we did send out, uh, eight, thirteen, um, letters to the committee within the two hundred buffer. And we did get, uh, seven objection letters from them. So? So staff is recommending denial. However, if you do decide to approve this, uh, variance, we're recommending that you approve it with condition one through four. I'm now open to any questions that you may have.
Any questions for city staff? So there's no mobile homes around that area?
No.
Or manufactured homes?
They're not supposed to be any.
No.
So, so is this, is this, uh, a possibility of this being for the intent of purpose of being like a rental? Like having two homes, two different residences within one lot?
So our code does not allow for, uh, rental properties. So, um, the only way based on our code that you would be able to do something like that is if you do like a duplex. Then you would be able to, but as of right now, you can't.
This would be considered like a mother of law. This would be considered like a mother-in-law quarters?
Correct. So you could add like an accessory dwelling unit, but it has to be attached to your home. It cannot stand alone.
So if that was the case, would it be allowed with the same square footage?
She would, she would be able to do that. She attaches it to her home, but it ha, it cannot be a manufactured home. She would have to build it out.
So if they did a stick-built home or built home, they could do that if it was attached to the property?
Yes.
But not a mobile home?
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right. At this moment, we'll open the section of the meeting to the public. Anybody wants to speak for or against? Please step forward. Please state your name and address for the record, three minutes or less.
Good morning, board. My name is Robin Miller. I would do wish to correct the, the name on there. It is listed as Robert Miller. Both are misspelled, so, um, this purpose is, is not for a rental. Our daughter is a new firefighter with Odessa Fire and Rescue. She is fully certified, um, and being sworn in on Friday as a firefighter EMT. Um, and we are just looking for affordable housing for her to give her her independence. She's nineteen years old, and entry-level housing in this area is very expensive. So this would be a, um, a way to give her affordable, affordable housing. And it's not what you think of when you have in your mental mind a mobile home. It's a tiny home. Um, and you can see the, the pictures there. It's, it's very, very small. It's four hundred and twenty-five square feet. Oh, you did ask about parking. We have plenty of space in our driveway currently for the amount of vehicles that we have, because my husband and I share a vehicle. So there is plenty of space for off-street parking in the existing lot. Is there any other questions?
Quick question for you. So when you bought this towny, uh, tiny house, um, what is it classified as when you bought it?
We have not purchased it yet.
Okay.
We thought that the right thing to do would be to get the approval before we purchased it. I do have Sean Fuller here. He is, has been in the industry for many, many years. He is better suited to answer that question when, when his time is here.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Anybody else wants to speak for or against the variance? Please state your name and address for the record, three minutes or less.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Sean Fuller. I, uh, have been in affordable housing for the last three decades. And I would like to address, uh, the issue of the difference between a modular home, which is allowed in that area, and a manufactured home. Thank you. It's okay. The financing is much different, just like you adequately correctly talked about FHA financing. A, a, financing a modular home, you can't get what's referred to as a chattel loan. In this particular case, we need a chattel loan. That's what they're approved for. That's how we can do this. The home itself is built in the exact same factory, the exact same manufacturer, from a mod to a HUD. And there are very, very minute differences between the two. Uh, there are some code issues, but as far as health, safety, welfare, there's no difference between the two. But there's about a twenty-five percent thousand dollar difference between a HUD and a mod, and this rolls back to it being affordable housing. I'd also like for the board to consider the fact that the main holder of the land is actually the City of Odessa to the north. If you go back, if we scroll back to the, to the map, if they've got that, I don't think they, see, it's, it's a lot larger. If you look to the north, it's a huge field, and they've actually moved the placement, there's the field I'm talking about. They've actually moved the placement of the home on that side, so the impact to anybody in that two-hundred-foot area would be greatly minimized. As a matter of fact, the only way you're gonna be able to see that is if you look down the alley or drive down the alley. When we talk about lot size, this is only four hundred and twenty-five square feet. It's extremely small. It's the smallest unit that we can actually be able to meet all the conditions that HUD requires. Uh, parking also won't be, uh, an issue, because if you notice, they've got all that parking there, and as she adequately spoke, uh, there, they only have one vehicle for them, for the family, and one for her. I think the biggest thing, uh, is that when you look at the, the neighbors, there are five letters that I have here, and, and one also from Paul Miller, who owns several properties in that area. And all five of these letters so support, uh, for this, uh, for this action. Um, I would ask that you approve this. Um, it kinda goes back to property rights, and I understand that health, safety, welfare are all things that we have to keep in mind. Won't be an impact on traffic, won't be an infrastructure impact. And like I said earlier, the vacant property to the north that the city owns is, is where it'll be impacted the most. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So I'm gonna ask the same question that I asked Ms. Miller when I go. What, what is this structure classified as?
It is classified and built as a HUD code manufactured home. If you looked at it, if I took you today and I showed you and I walked you in and I said, this is structure A, and I walked you into structure B, you would not be able to tell the difference. The only way that you could tell the difference is the tag on the back of the house. That's it.
But it's still classified as a home, as a manufactured home. Reason I, reason I ask this question is because there are some tiny homes out there that are not classified as homes. They're classified as RVs.
That is correct. That's ANSI code. And I can walk you into an ANSI code unit and walk you into a HUD code unit, and you can't tell the difference. As a matter of fact, from a sales perspective, I'll have two sitting side by side, and the mod is way better built, but my consumers will buy the tiny house simply because it has the term tiny house on it.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else wants to speak for or against the variance? No? We close this section of the meeting. Off to the public, commissioners?
So that's gonna lead me to my question to you, Elizabeth. What, what are the regulations on, on putting an RV on this structure, on this property?
Uh, an RV is not allowed. RVs only are allowed in RV parks. You can park, like, let's say you have an RV and you're, like, loading stuff and unloading. You can park your RV while you're doing something like that, as long as it's on the concrete in your driveway.
So, so...
And again, uh, like he mentioned, it's a HUD classified. HUD is not a modular home, which modular is what is allowed in a SF three.
So with this modular home...
This is not a modular. This is a HUD.
Okay, HUD home. With this HUD home addition to the property, is it gonna actually increase the value of the property as well?
I would actually let maybe an expert on that answer that.
Mobile homes do not hold their value very well. Uh, so increasing the value, I don't know.
But this wouldn't be considered a mobile home, though, would it?
It is.
It is. It is a mobile home.
It is. That's the difference. A modular home is what is not a mobile home.
So going with utility infrastructure, are they gonna have to have another water tap, sewer tap, or they're gonna tap in from?
They have to tap into what is existing. We can only give one sewer tap, one water tap, and one irrigation tap per lot.
So they're also saying right now they have ample parking, but they decide to sell in a few years to a family in the front and a single person in the back. So then again, we're gonna run into that problem, not enough parking, correct?
Correct. And, and based on this, you still have to provide two additional par- parking. And, and, um, the, uh, off-street parking is not considered parking. It has to be on your property. And the driveway is also not considered the parking.
Also, the comments that came back that were against it, did they say why, or is it just a box they checked were against?
No, they couldn't. Also to, uh, to consider, if we were to approve this, we're gonna set a precedence for the rest.
I agree with you. That's what I'm concerned about.
Just take that consideration. Do you wanna pass them before you're done?
You want me to share?
Please.
I'm sorry, sir.
Okay. Are those letters that we're getting, Elizabeth?
It says neighbor in their address.
Ms. Shaughnessy? Quick question. Are these within the two-hundred-foot radius?
I don't know, because she just provided these, so I don't, I wouldn't know. Shayna would have to go and check to see. Um, I was told that if you guys were to move forward with the condition, they're willing to, if you guys put it as a condition, that if they were to sell this property, that they would have to remove the, um, mobile home.
And that's exactly why they don't add value to real property?
Because they're, because they're personal property, not real property.
And they can leave when the seller leaves.
Right, right.
Can I write on this?
Yes, go ahead.
On, on these? So if there's a check mark, they're, they are within the two-hundred, uh...
Only have two approving, three protesting. Seven protesting.
Owner, thirty-seven twenty-four.
Okay.
This guy probably has five hundred rentals. He has a lot of rentals, about five hundred across the city.
This is a... This is a planning, this, this does not, uh-huh, this is not... Minor properties does not go into consideration. This is a landlord.
Sorry, we can't prove that in sign and writing, that's what I would say. Would you say?
Yeah, it has to be in writing.
Has to be in writing. Sorry.
Commissioners? Shayna, this is... Or we might just pass it around. This, these are the ones that... That were sent. Tito, how many check marks do we have over there?
Uh, one, two, three.
Three. Three approvals. Do we have, do we have any codes around the tiny house stuff?
So tiny homes is a lingo. So because they're, like Mr. Rito was saying, they're classified as mobile homes or RVs. That's when you go, that's, that's what it comes down to.
Got it. Thank you. All right, commissioners? Do we have an approval? Do we have denial? Do we have a table? Do you have some recommendations? Well, this is a hard one.
This one is a hard one. It's, you know, 'cause to me, I see it as like a way around a contractor. Expensing it at a reliable contractor and that. For, for the intent purposes, I, I get it. It's mother-in-law quarters. If it was to be sold, if, if there was a way to where it remained permanent, I would be okay with it, more so. But with it being an option to where they can uproot it at any given point, you know, that's, that, and then that's where it causes an additional disruption.
If it is a true mobile home, um, you can make it real property, and it's a personal property, which you surrender the title to the state of Texas, so it becomes real property. That can be done.
And we go back to, SF three does allow modular homes.
Modular, but not...
There's an option to say, you know, and I'm looking at this one tiny home that's classified as a mobile home, an RV, or whatever the classification is, but maybe there's a tiny home out there that is a modular classification that could be set in the same size, be, be done here, so...
But if it's a modular home, they still will be denied because of the lot size, the parking spots.
And it has to be attached to the main structure.
They might be able to work, I don't know if they might. Have you guys looked into modular units?
So the major issue with that is, there's no way to obtain pockets and to make that happen. That's the hiccup. And the difference between the product is very expensive. It takes the affordability part out of it. Uh, but the difference in what you get in code is very minimal.
And Gary can actually talk in code, because he's our building official, and there is a big, there is a difference in code. If you guys have questions on that.
The two main things we have, mobile homes are not allowed in the area.
Correct.
And it's a single-family lot.
Correct.
And we're way over...
Our lot coverage.
Our lot coverage.
Once you're looking, because they're considered two, two homes.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, commissioners?
I make a motion to deny.
There's a motion on the table to deny, for a denial. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any objections? Motion's denied. Our next case is case file number twenty twenty-five dash ten dash V, open in public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Robert DePorto, owner of a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash five of City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow a carport to be built within thirteen feet front yard setback instead of the required twenty-five feet front yard setback in a two-family, two-F dash one zoning district, Lot thirty-two, Block fourteen, Harrisdale Edition, fifth, filing replat lots twenty-six to thirty and twenty-three, Block fourteen, twenty-nine sixteen Catalina Drive.
So, uh, this one is at twenty-nine sixteen Catalina Drive, as you mentioned, and it's in, uh, SF one zoning district. Um, and it's for, um, single-family residents. Uh, the applicant is proposing to obtain a variance to allow the construction of four hundred and sixty square foot, which would be a twenty-by, um, twenty-three carport to be built on a thirteen-foot front yard setback instead of the required twenty-five-foot yard setback. So it's basically encroaching, um, eight B. Uh, again, we're recommending denial because it is going against our city ordinance, which is fourteen dash seven dash five. However, if you do decide to move forward with this variance, we do recommend that you approve it with condition one through four. Now open for any questions.
Can you back up one picture?
Sure.
Two, two please. Three. Four, okay. So the reason they need a carport is they have built in their garage?
Correct. They, yeah. They converted the garage.
Is it over, in the overlay zone?
Uh, no. That's why we're here.
Any other questions for city? No? All right. Anybody wants to speak? At this moment, we're gonna open the section of the meeting to the public. Anybody speak for or against this variance? Please step forward, state your name and address for the record, in three minutes or less.
Hey, good morning. My, my name's Robert DePorto, twenty-nine sixteen Catalina. So I basically just wanna build a carport, uh, to protect my vehicles. Uh, we did close in the garage. We just needed a bigger master bedroom, those, uh, the square footage in those houses originally weren't big enough, so that's the only reason we did. We did utilize the garage in the past, but we needed the living space, so we, we enclosed it, so... I'm really just asking, you know... I'm really just asking, you know, if I could, uh, build this carport and, uh, just to protect my vehicles from the weather and the birds and...
Room to hell.
That's all I have. Any questions?
No questions.
Your dimension of your carport, the the depth is...
You're asking for twenty-eight feet?
Yeah, I believe, I think it was twenty.
Looks like a twenty-three.
I saw twenty-three on one, and then I see a twenty-eight up on the roof side.
I see twenty-three.
It's twenty-three.
Twenty-three.
Now, still, it's still gonna leave it far enough from the road that I don't think it's gonna make a difference either way. Yeah, thirteen feet from the side.
And what's it allow?
Uh, the thing is that his setback is supposed to be twenty-five foot setback, so he's encroaching eight feet.
Eight feet. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. DePorto.
Thank you.
Commissioners? You're not quiet today.
Well, eight feet is a lot.
And there's neighbors on the side. This is not a corner lot. There's not any big streets. It's in the middle of the street.
No, but it is under a little bit of a curve, but I don't, I don't think it's, uh, high-speeding.
Chuck, can he? Joe? Joe Tucker, sorry. That, it wouldn't, it wouldn't create any, uh, hazard if it's in the middle of the street, stuff like that, right?
Yeah, I was just looking at that curve. What are we, what is our distance from the street requested?
Thirteen, thirteen. No, it would be from the street?
Yeah.
Also, do we have pictures? What's it gonna look like? I mean, is it just basically pipe, carport, or do we have huge columns that could cause?
Go back to the dimensions.
I think it's thirteen feet from.
Plus the five. Yeah, I think, I don't see an issue with that.
There won't be no hazardous building. Okay. Thank you, Joe.
So, quick. Elizabeth, and all the notices were sent out to neighbors also. Did we get anything back?
No.
Okay.
We had eighteen that were sent out. Fourteen that were sent out.
Commissioners, so... One came back as an approval?
As a deny.
Or a date, one date come in to the deny? Can you pass that along? It is cold.
We can't control it.
Oh, it's an approval.
It's an approval.
She marked it as denial.
No. Or approval, the carports are needed to protect. So she parked us a denial, but she's approving it.
Yep. That's what she did.
So, going back to commissioners, commissioners, it is, uh, eight foot, encroaching eight foot. According to our city, there's no hazardous, um, visibility that would create har- hazard for people driving. What are your thoughts, recommendations, any, uh, motions? There's no denials from this, from the community?
Denial approval.
A denial approval.
Makes sense.
Mixed emotions.
Can you go to the picture of the...
And will the carport be attached to the dwelling?
Yes.
Commissioners?
I don't have a problem with it. You know, this was brought up a while back where carports could be used for storage of miscellaneous items, but with the owner coming here with his very intent purpose for his vehicles, I don't have a problem. I, I don't have a problem with it.
So, is that a motion?
I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve.
Do you wanna include the recommendations from the city? The four recommendations?
I'm not being closed for the future, I agree. Yes, I, to approve the, the conditions.
So there's a motion, uh, from the commissioners with, to approve with the conditions, one through four? Is that what you said? Yes. There's a motion on the floor. Do I hear a second?
I second that motion.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Motion carries. All right, case, last one. Case file number twenty twenty-five dash eleven dash V, open in public hearing to consider the approval of the request of Stephen Garcia, owner from a variance from section fourteen dash seven dash five of the City of Odessa zoning ordinance to allow structure carport to be built at least five feet front yard setback instead of the fifteen feet front yard setback from section fourteen dash seven dash eight D to allow structure at zero side yard setback instead of the ten feet side yard setback in LC Light Commercial zoning district seven, block two, Jones subdivision, first filing replant, block seventy-seven, original town, four hundred Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you again. So this one is at, like you mentioned, four hundred Jefferson Avenue, and it's in LC Light Commercial district, but in, as you know, in Light Commercial district, you can still have residential, so that's why we have a residential home in here. This one was a little bit, uh, challenging for us because, um, there's, as you can tell, there's an easement, uh, right-of-way easement there. But unfortunately, when we have to look at this based on our, our, our codes and based on the law, it does not comply with the requirements based on the law and our zoning, our ordinance. So, in that case, the, he's asking for a variance for a three-hundred-and-twelve, uh, square foot carport to be placed within a five-foot yard setback instead of the required fifteen-foot yard setback, and allow for the carport to be placed on a zero street yard setback instead of the ten. Like I mentioned, um, as you can tell, uh, there's an easement in there. So, um, technically, he does have a little bit more, but because of when we're analyzing this, we have to go with what is, like, on our plot, our, our parcel. So based on that, he's not, um, complying with our ordinance. So, we are recommending denial. However, if you do decide to move forward with this approval, we recommend that you approve with the, um, conditions one through four. Not open for any questions. And you can go back to that picture where...
Elizabeth, where they're showing to attach it, or where you're saying to attach it, does it just have two corners touching? Is it?
It's not attaching at all to, to, he's giving, I believe it's a six foot.
But you want it attached?
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry. Okay, I see you.
What are you calling the easement? I don't, is that the right-of-way?
So, yes, the R, the one that says R O W, that's the right-of-way. So that's where he's trying to go to the zero. So what I'm saying is, like, yes, yes.
So the easement is in case we ever widen that street, correct?
I will defer to my experts.
Correct, there's additional right-of-way if we ever needed four right-of-way.
Okay.
I don't see that happening on Jefferson.
Never, no, we're growing.
We're growing.
So he has a eighteen-foot on, right-of-way on Fourth Street and a nineteen on Jefferson.
Now, is he still proposing to stay the five foot back on the Fourth Street side and then the zero on the Jefferson side?
Correct, correct.
Would that create any hardship? Uh, visibility, 'cause it is a corner lot.
I don't see it, especially because he's not enclosing it and with the easements in place.
Yeah, there's, uh, there's a deadline with the additional right-of-way.
As long as it is not enclosed.
Correct.
You caught my attention earlier at the beginning, where you was mentioning that it was not in compliance with state law, the ordinance?
No, it's not in compliance with our ordinance. Sorry if I said state.
Is this in the overlay?
So he, so based on my ordinance, he has to have, um, I think it's a ten and a fifteen, uh, setback. But in this case, he's go, he's asking to be right at zero on one.
On the Jefferson.
On Jefferson, and then instead of giving me ten on the frontage, he's giving me five.
Five. To, to the easement line.
To, to my property line.
Gotcha.
So like, let's say, take away the easements. That's how we would analyze it, right? And that's why we're here. But in this case, it's very unique, right? Because he does have those easements there.
So if there was no easement, this would not be an issue?
No, if there was no easements there, this would be an issue. But because there is an easement, it's easier for you guys. But I don't have authority to say yay.
Special conditions.
Yes.
Is there any way that he can adjust the site? Of where he wants to build it?
Right there.
You're saying move it forward?
Forward.
Move it forward?
That helps one.
So you would be okay on one side? You'd be okay if you move it forward? You'd be okay on what, fourth?
Yes, on Fourth Street, yeah.
Which is actually where your easement is, right?
No, your easement's on Jefferson.
It's on Jennifer, Jefferson, okay.
So should we?
But it's not in the, you know, the traffic coming down Fourth Street.
Yeah, the easement gives you eighteen feet on one side, nineteen foot on the other side.
So there's not a...
So it wouldn't really...
It's not a visibility hardship. So should we, any more questions for the city staff? No? Okay. At this moment, we'll open our section of meeting to the public. Anybody who wants to speak for or against, please step forward.
I want to speak.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, three minutes or less.
Yes, I'm Stephen Garcia. I live on four hundred Jefferson. I bought this place, uh, twenty years ago. It was a smaller, anyway, make sure, dropped a little house. That's why the cement slab was a pot-to-bill house. Throw that one away, they messed it all up, so I wanted to go with this trailer house. The seam, the slab, of this slab on the driveway where I wanted to build my carports, it's been there for how long? I don't know. So, anyway, that's why I wanted to build it, 'cause if I put it together with a house, it's gonna make it look like one big, long building, right? And that's not gonna look right. And plus the cement slab and the two entrances that I got, they've been there, so it just makes sense to put it right there. You know what I mean? I mean, it's there for a reason. And the two, I've actually got three entrances. Right there, where you see that blue truck, there's another entrance there. 'Cause how it was moved, that little bitty house was moved back further down to the alley side, and they had a little carport.
So, the picture we're looking at, where you're proposing the carport on the front of it, does that concrete wrap all the way around back to the streets, like a circle drive?
Yes, yes, that's exactly what it was. Yeah, exactly. But we're, we're right here, right, right there, where I was gonna build. I threw some of that cement away, but as soon as I get some money, I'm gonna patch it up and throw it and put a new one there. But that's the reason I want that carport there, 'cause it's already there, the entrance, all that. I mean, it just makes sense. We have to drive it in, it's okay. It's gonna be open, same, simple and plain and nice-looking. The way I got it planned to make it. And it's gonna be made out of two inches, five, two and seven inches, the structure.
Back up one picture, to Ariel again. Couple pictures here. What does that say? How far is the corner of it from the mobile home?
Forty.
And how far are we off on Fourth Street?
Eighteen.
Yeah, I'm about two foot up ahead. Y'all, I measured it. I went out there and measured two or three times. You got nine, nineteen on Fourth was his yard, and then on four hundred Jefferson, it's, uh, eighteen, and I got, I think, three foot left. That is mine. But possibly, I don't know if it was the other one, but. Let me just...
This one's five, right?
Yeah. So he has twenty-three. Any other questions?
So what was the reason you mentioned you had moved the mobile home back already?
Oh, no, no. What was that again?
Was it for compliance, the reason that you had moved the, the, the home?
No, I, I threw the small little house. It was a small little house. I was trying to build a house, but everything went the other way around. I mean, I got red thaw here and there, threw ten, ten thousand dollars away, put another ten thousand in cement slab, and lost my job. When you see that red truck, the house where that driveway is, the entrance where that blue truck is, there was a carport there, and the little bitty house would have one room, one living room, one kitchen, one living bathroom, and one bedroom, real little. So, you know, my family was going, I said, well, we can't, you know, how are we gonna feel? You know, it's violating the privacy. So I dropped the house and everything fell back, but this cement slab's been there since I bought this house, the property. How long ago? I don't know.
Thank you, Mr. Stephen.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else wants to speak for or against variance? All right, we close this section of the meeting. Commissioners, were there any, uh, protests? Elizabeth? Any protests or against?
We're not sure if there's a cutback there, and Shayna's trying to pull the plat.
What do you mean a cutback?
At the intersection.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, my question was if there's a cutback on that lot.
Then it would encroach it.
Then we're encroaching.
This would infringe into the right-of-way, but, um, I think Shayna's checking.
So you're saying that the forty-five on the end is up, the cutback?
Yeah.
Is it always cold in here?
Yes.
Keeps everybody awake.
You gonna tell us a joke while we wait?
So then infringement, if that is an issue, what is the impact? What is the significance here?
We wouldn't allow, if the, if the, if the right-of-way was not to allow.
Would not be allowed.
Typically, when the right-of-ways are that big, there's not a cutback. It's a whole plat, it's platted, ninety-degree corner, and that's why that right-of-way is so big, eighteen. Most of the right-of-way, you're gonna see them sitting somewhere between five and ten foot. But when you see them this big, that's because there's no cutback, but she's gonna verify it.
We usually don't have that in these cases.
So there is no fighting cutback, that's, I just wondered.
No cutback. All right. Commissioners? No cutback.
And no protest letters sent back in for or against? None? And this is light commercial?
Right. I'm okay with it.
I don't see a problem with that.
Okay.
All right, do I have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the variance with the staff recommendations.
There's a motion on the table. Do I hear a second?
A second.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any objections? Same sign? Motion carries. All right. Is that it?
That's it.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
There's a motion to adjourn?
Second that motion.
There's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Oh, all in favor?
I would say aye, right?
Motion carries. All right, everybody have a great day.